Good evening. Welcome to the Thornop Lake Log Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We are in the Early Childhood Center and it is seven P M. With that call to order, I'd like a roll call the board, please.
Brock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Hess here, Powers?
Here.
Housen?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Winger?
Hopefully he'll be here shortly. All right, thank you. And with that, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is in the back. Three, two, one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so looking to for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented or if you would like to make an adjustment. And I would, I would like to add in a moment of silence, please. We have several things that happened recently. Mr. Lahey, is there a way to turn down my volume or no? I feel like I'm really loud. It's all right. I don't stress about it, but I thought you might have a quick control. Okay. All right, I'll just, I'll be loud. So I would like to add a moment of silence for several events.
I can make a motion to adopt the agenda as is and adding a moment of silence.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion to adopt the motion of moment of silence. A motion to adopt the board, or sorry, the agenda as presented with a moment of silence by Housen.
I'll second.
All right, and a second by Brock. Okay, is there any discussion? All right, thank you, board. Motion carries. Okay, so the moment of silence, there's, there was just several things that happened this recently. One was the Appalachia High School. I think that's something that's, that's near and dear to all of us. It's just, it's difficult for the students, staff and community, so I would like people to be thoughtful of that. September eleventh is coming up Wednesday, and I know that for many of us, we remember what we're doing that day, what we're doing that moment, actually. And it's something that is becoming a historical event and not really, you know, identified as a, a specific thing, but I'd like to keep that in our memories. And then recently, Coach Tom Lehman passed away. I found out he was a teacher for forty years. Former athletic director, wrestling coach, and if anybody else has anything else to share, I, I didn't know him, but he sounded like a wonderful person.
He's also been subbing in the school district for the last couple of years as well, so.
I, I knew Tom Lehman personally. He was my coach. He was a teacher. And I've connected with a lot of TK alumni over the past couple of days. And it is clear that Tom not only touched the lives in a better way of the athletes that he coached, but also the kids that he had in class. A lot of the memorial, memorial statements that people are leaving on social media and other places are some kids that just had him in class. So he was, he was a friend to, to all.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you. So if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to public communication, public input. I did not receive any slips. Is there anybody that would like to speak for public comment? Would anybody like to speak for public comment? Okay, public communications is closed, and that takes us to consent grouping. Any consent grouping item can be removed for separate consideration by board member request. All consent grouping items will be adopted in one motion with a roll call vote. So looking for a motion to go either direction.
Our motion to approve the items of the consent grouping three A through three C.
We got a motion by Brock.
Support.
Support by Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Winger, Smith?
Yes.
Housen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Dickman?
Yes.
And Brock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. All right, moving down to board items for information. Committee and liaison reporting.
We've had no committee meetings since our, our last board meeting.
Okay.
And then we are up for, Chris has a informational audit update for us.
But we, we haven't had, we're, we're getting so used to having construction committee reporting and that's.
Construction is a rap, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a wonderful thing to hear. Okay, Mr. Lahey?
Thank you.
All right. So this is the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four audit update. There's a lever. There you go.
Okay, so this is just a real brief update. Speak my voice. It's a Detroit Lions, Jerry's voice right there. I apologize. So last week, we had our auditors on site from Manchester to do our annual fiscal audit. And so nothing's finalized at this point, but I'm relatively certain that all general entries have been made and we're just, we're moving on to the point of them just doing the financial statements. And we'll have final, final ones here in the next couple of weeks. And then, of course, they will come out, they will have a monitor come out and speak to the board, I assume, next month. I haven't confirmed that yet. Wanted to give you all a brief, brief overview, five slides or less here on how it's looking. So I'll try not to stand in the way of it. As I typically do, we're just going to run through the revenues. We'll talk about general fund revenues, expenses, and then where, where we're going to come out of this. So we actually budgeted slightly more revenues than we received this year, and there's one reason for that. And that's related to about two hundred thousand, two hundred and three thousand dollars of section ninety-seven J funds, all right? So the state of Michigan did something different this year in that these, these funds were allowable to be spent in last fiscal year, but they split the revenue between last fiscal year and then we'll receive the other half. Half in last fiscal year and half in this coming fiscal year, including our October statement. Because of that, we weren't aware of that at the time, because of that, we weren't able to record that offset. So all the expenses there, the revenue is not. So really, everything's on budget. If you look at it, local revenue is, I mean, within two thousand dollars. Our state revenue you see was, was lower by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was because of that ninety-seven J. We would have been about fifty thousand dollars higher than expected there otherwise. And then federal and incoming transfers really just piggyback off each other. All right? So our revenue, revenue variance, I always say, if we're within a one percent variance on both sides of the ledger, that's really, really good. That's respected and, and kind of the, the gold standard. Our revenue variance was point three five percent. Okay, so we were a third of a percent off on revenue. If not for that ninety-seven J revenue, we would have been point zero nine percent off on revenue. So we would have been within ten of a percent. So pretty much we nailed revenue and, and of course, nothing to be alarmed with. We are still getting that revenue in this fiscal year. On the expense side, I don't really need to go through a whole lot here. On a forty-six million dollar budget, almost forty-seven million dollar budget, by the time you bring the transfer out of there, we were off by under eight thousand dollars. So within a, a two hundreds of a percent variance on expenses, which are well within that one percent variance. Again, that's a testament to the business office and the work that Bart does and Tommy does in the office there. So I'm, I'm moving right on through this. Please stop me if you have any questions. So what's this look like? Okay, you know, we had come in here and obviously we're close there. We came into two thousand twenty-three with a seven point eight million dollar demo fund, fund balance, and we added one million, two hundred and sixty thousand to that, all right, which is slightly less than we said we would. But again, that's because of the ninety-seven J. So we'll end the fiscal year with just over a nine point one million dollar fund balance in the general fund, and that's just south of one percent as a percent of expenditures for the general fund. So we continue to be extremely healthy, and we'll see what this year brings, but no surprises as we went through the general fund. The food service fund, okay, this has been something we've talked about over the years. We're constantly trying to fight battle, making sure that the meaningful and a meaningful base spend on that fund balance. We did add to fund balance last fiscal year. We came in with a four hundred and forty-seven thousand fund balance. We're going to be just short of adding a hundred thousand dollars to that despite our best efforts to add new items and new equipment across the district. So we'll have to see this. We're going to be right on the brink of being on the state's spend down plan, but they have, they have relaxed on that in the last year, so I don't anticipate any issues there. And that spend down limit is you can only carry three months expenditures in your food service fund. And then, of course, I always keep putting up the investments. Last year was a banner year, a record year. We talked about that before. But actually, in the first few months of twenty-four, twenty-five, all four funds are already outpacing what we did last year. I don't expect that to continue. I think some federally cuts are coming. I don't think that's, it's pretty, pretty well known. So whereas we have been collecting about five point two percent on all of our reserve funds, I think it's going to dip down below five because it's coming here pretty, pretty significantly by the time we get through. So that's it. Like I said, real quick, Tom Verdi, Mayor, will, I don't know who exactly it will be. We had a few new auditors, probably Dave. He's, he's a, he's a young man who did a great job, but this will be one of his first if he comes here next month. So he'll go into more detail. I'll entertain any questions, anybody else.
I appreciate it. I mean, we've, we've been blessed in my tenure with Mr. Blitschak, Mr. McCarthy and yourself. I know you're, you're praising your team, but also you're leading the team, so well done. Thank you.
I've spent a good time with school funding, so tougher times to come.
You can watch the surrounding school districts having issues. So for us to be where we're at, it's kudos to you guys. Thank you.
I will say that, I mean, every decision we make is, is meaningful and student-centered. And it's, you know, with the future in mind, it is sustainable, so I really think we're in a great place across all the funds, not just the general fund.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to board items for action, and we have a new hire, Mr. McCarthy.
Yes, by moving Jeff Doc into the assistant principal role, we needed to fill a biology teacher position, and that is being filled by Joyce Zimmer. She has numerous years of experience and is, is certified and has taught for a number of years, so.
Wonderful. If you have any questions, please, please ask them now. Otherwise, looking for a motion? I'll make the motion that the Board of Education approve Joyce Zimmer for employment for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year.
I can support.
All right. Powers with the motion and Housen with support. Is there any discussion by the board? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, board. Motion carries. Let's see, item B, high school textbook approval, AP Physics.
Right, I can ask Heather to come up. Her first time addressing the board, so.
Really loud microphone. Oh, it's not. Do I have to turn on?
It turns green, yeah.
I'm Heather Rose. I'm second derek, director in week four, or something like that. And I'm here to ask you to adopt the AP Physics textbook. Kim and Alex weren't tired. I'm doing this and Kim really enjoyed working with Alex, but she's happy to have me up here talking to you. So we have had the resources available for review since the last board meeting, August twelfth, and nobody wanted to come to me about physics. So there have been no questions or inquiries whatsoever, and so we would just like to ask for your board's approval for the college physics, a strategic approach by night to the textbook and online resources.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, looking for a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion that the Board of Education approve the AP Physics textbooks and online resource college physics, a strategic approach by night to be implemented in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion by Dickman, support by Hess. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, board. Motion carries. Okay, M A S B voting delegates. So the, I believe it's called the Annual Conference.
Annual Leadership Conference, yeah.
The Leadership Conference, thank you. M A S B's two thousand twenty-four Delegate Assembly will be Thursday. Is anybody planning on going to the conference in general?
I'll be attending.
Are you going to go Thursday?
Well, I wasn't planning on staying, but I can.
That's the, that's the kicker. Yeah, I was, I keep looking at the Friday, Friday evening, Saturday.
Yeah, me too.
So, okay, is anybody besides Chrissy going? Okay, so that kind of makes that easy. We'll pencil you in. Okay. So all the delegates must be certified and submitted. We can take care of that, but it looks like our recommended action is just going to be that we nominate. Chrissy, would anybody else like to be on the nomination?
Oh, come on.
I can't. It's election season and I have a new job. I'm sorry. I would go otherwise.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chrissy, for representing us.
Happy to do it.
I remember I went once with Dave and we, we had a wonderful time together. Okay, so looking for a motion for Ms. Chrissy Housen to represent the board here at the M A S B delegate. I can do it. I'll make a motion that the Board of Education nominate Chrissy Housen as M A S B delegate.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Powers, support by Hess. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, board. Motion carries, and thank you, Chrissy. And I do strongly encourage everybody to go to the M A S B. I keep talking about it. I, I genuinely like it. I like talking with people in different districts, see what's going on. They have a lot of good breakout sessions.
You can get, you can get a few CBAs done, completed as well, FYI.
Yep. Okay, middle school classroom furniture. Mr. Lahey, I see you're getting very excited here, yeah.
Right, yeah. Hey, the next three things are all various.
All him, yeah.
So pump them up. All right, so two years, two years goes quickly, and two years ago, you all approved eighth grade furniture. We had a lot of ragtag furniture in middle school, and Ms. Wagner, you know, got my ear. And so we replaced all of that furniture, and it's beautiful, and it's held up, and it's wonderful. And no matter the size of the student, they're able to move the tables and, or the early desks and chairs around, and they've stood the, the test of time. And at the time, I told Ms. Wagner that in two years, we'd come back and we'd look at furniture for the seventh graders because their furniture wasn't as bad as the eighth grade, but it's still, you know, some of them are still wired desks that the seat is attached and they're, they're beyond their useful life. So this is the proposal to work with all the best in chair through the Sourcewell Consortium pricing to replace all the seventh grade furniture. Sixth grade is in good shape, so that will basically take care of the furniture at the middle school for a long time to come. You can see, I put a few pictures on here if you can see that far, but these desks are really versatile. As one-offs, you could turn them into a, a octagon or a hexagon. You do a lot of them, okay? So they're, they're great desks, and they're standing the test of time. So there's really not a whole lot more to say about it than that, other than this is already budgeted. It's in the capital projects fund, and with your approval, as you see there for just shy of eighty thousand dollars, we'll get these ordered and, and move the furniture out and back in, we're hoping for over Christmas break. This price does include delivery and installation because, you know, having the professionals that do that, any questions?
No, but I'm just glad to get somebody to put them together because that's time consuming, yeah.
And you end up with things getting loose and.
What do they, what do you do with all the old furniture, then?
If it's useful, some of it will be passed down to other buildings, so Paige can use some of it, but honestly Paige needs some too. So I'll be looking at my summer, getting some furniture for Paige. So if something still has use to life, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll store it because it'll be a spare, otherwise we'll dispose or something like that. See if anybody wants it, and then otherwise we'll just store it.
So that leaves the sixth grade with the oldest furniture in the building.
Yeah, but I.
How's that looking?
It's uniform. It's not, it's not, I mean, it's not brand new like eighth and sevens will be, but it's, it's not a high priority, I would say. It's still, still in good shape. Probably has a good five to eight years left. The next, my sights would be saying after this on Paige and some of the, as far as furniture needs. And we just, we build into the capital projects fund every year, a little bit of money to replace, you know, a regular level or a couple of classrooms and just keep checking away at it.
Thank you. Any other questions, clarifications? All right, looking for a motion to go forward with this purchase?
I'll make the motion that the Board of Education approve a classroom furniture purchase not to exceed seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Dickman and support by Brock. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Brock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Powers?
Yes.
Housen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. All right, this was an interesting little series of events. Mr. McCarthy, the Bob White Stadium scoreboard.
Right, well, I think Chris has this in his presentation as well, but, yeah, I know I've shared a little bit of information with you, and it is a, a great, you know, thing for the school district, so.
Yeah, this is really something. I have not really experienced a donation like this before, so it's a pretty neat opportunity. So basically, Mr. Hammer has been working with a community donor over the last several months that really came forward and wanted to do this for the district. So we had a donor provide a state-of-the-art Daktronics scoreboard. You know, Brian will tell you it's, it's bigger and better than, I guess I won't name districts, but we're going to have one of the best scoreboards around. If this is approved and, and everyone feels comfortable moving forward. So how this will work, and I know you've all read about it, so I won't belabor the point, but the commitment is to provide us funding for this scoreboard in three installments. And at first, we looked at actually financing the scoreboard. Daktronics, again, they're Sourcewell pricing, you know, the bid already. But they have a, a zero percent interest over three years type plan. But we looked into the legality of that and we decided that's not the best way to move forward because that, I won't go into details of that. We have about one point six million dollars in our capital projects fund right now. And so I feel, Mr. McCarthy feels, the best way forward is for the district to use the capital projects fund to pay for this scoreboard. And then we have an agreement in place with the donor that they'll repay us over three installments. Actually, the first one will happen this month, so we will, we'll receive that before we even, we even send any money off to Daktronics. Jump in if you'd be eager.
I was just going to say, I think when we spoke, it was going to be the first two payments were going to be here before we even started the construction process.
Well, not, not completely. So we'll have the first two payments before it's installed and, and useful. So the payment plan right now, or the payment schedule, would be to receive the first one in September, receive another payment next March, March of two thousand twenty-five, okay? Which is right, we're looking at full installation and usability in April, two thousand twenty-five. So that second payment will line up, and then we'll receive the third payment, January first of two thousand twenty-six. So at the end of, well, it'll, we'll be using it by then, basically, but that's okay. That's the final third, ninety-five thousand or so, okay? Brian has also, you know, worked with other partners. He has commitments in place for donations of the steel for the pillars, the concrete to hold the pillars in place, and then the electrical to, to run to the sign, okay? And I know you guys have all read about this, so I'll move right on. Really, we're just looking at a couple of district costs. To install the sign, we have one quote for about fourteen thousand. We had another quote that was higher, but that's a pretty small price to pay. And then we had to run five of the internet to the sign so we could communicate with it, you know, hardware. And that's not going to carry an amount that exceeds the bid threshold, all right? So I think the district will be in this around thirty thousand dollars for a sign that values at about three hundred thousand dollars. District opportunities, and this is just scratching the surface. Obviously, this is a huge curriculum opportunity. We've already started to talk with the high school about classes, actually, where students are going to run this score, scoreboard and program it. You can use it for, for events, athletic events, as well as graduation. I mean, the sky's the limit with this thing. And I shouldn't, I should mention that you can turn off the big video board and just have the scoreboard too. So if you've got a soccer game there on Saturday, you don't have to have the whole thing on, and we can still keep scoring. So if you've got a soccer game there on Saturday, you don't have to have the whole thing on, and you can still keep score, uh, it's not a high school event. Um, and then obviously advertising, you know, Brian goes out and has the banners hung all over, but this is gonna take that to the next level as well, advertising opportunities there, like. Uh, this is the first mock-up of, of what it would look like, obviously a very, very large display, and I think in the write-up I had, I had that in there, uh, Bob White Stadium, you know, obviously right along the top, and then you can see where some anger partners would go, uh, you know, obviously the Trojan logo, it's gonna be a really handsome sign, pretty big. Um, and that's the mock-up of what it would look like there.
Size-wise, yeah.
Okay, and I should mention that it will include a sound system. Daktronics actually came out, uh, Craig and I and Brian and Tony stopped down too. Uh, they, they actually built one of these up smaller than this, um, and had it on the parking lot and played all kinds of, you know, announcements and music, and it's just, it's sounding, how the sound quality is, especially on the, the, um.
Stadium ball.
Stadium, yeah, so. Very great opportunity here, this is what we're looking at, uh, so we got a donation agreement prepared, signed by both parties. Uh, we, we'll basically go on with board approval tonight, we'll, we'll get that first donation, and we'll, we'll get it going with Daktronics. Scoreboard, scoreboard will be installed, like I said, in the spring of 2025, and our quoted cost is right here, $280,291, but then I added in a 10% contingency just in case, um, you know, some di- design changes. Um, basically, our donor has said, uh, I wanna pay for the whole thing, right? So this is the cost of the scoreboard, but there may be a few other costs, such as the fiber that I think they would pack that as. So that's a lot of information, I know you've read about it, Craig has given you information, what are your questions?
I'm not su- I'm sorry. Uh, I'm not sure, but is there training needed for people operating in the, in the press box?
Yes.
Okay, are, we're going to control that then and not just let anybody go up there and start?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I don't know what Brian's vision is within, I'm gonna back it up, I mean, controlling the score down here is really the same as what we have right now, so that, that part can be trained. It's all of the different material that you can put on the actual, uh, video board that is really pretty intricate. Um, I mean, this is the same board that you have in the major league stadiums, college football stadiums. In my write-up, you saw, I just picked out a few examples, but if you go to the Daktronics website, I mean, they're worldwide, and the renown is, is kind of, too. So the, I think the opportunities are in this there.
Chris, Chris talked about, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Chris talked about, you know, the curriculum that could go along with this, and we've already talked with Derek Dean, the digital media, new digital media teacher, about potentially teaching something to go along with this, so that students could be putting together either advertising that would go up there, or like, say, for graduation, putting together all the graduates' pictures and their names and everything that would scroll, scroll through. So it does have a curricular aspect to it as well.
Yeah, you do see some school districts will put a sign like this up as part of the bond or whatever it may be, and the whole football game, their logo just spins right here, 'cause nobody's learned how to program it yet and run the sign. And, you know, so it's, it's literally how much you put in is what you're gonna get out, so I think this will unite some passion. It's a great opportunity that the district, I mean, it's, it's all about students, you know, um, what a cool thing to be able to do, so.
Okay, so then that could potentially be like a live feed at the game?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, you can play instant replays on that thing, if you, if you're, you know, if you can figure out how to do it.
Okay, well, that'd be fun, yeah, and then that could, I'm hoping that would be a volunteer position or a school position, yeah.
Yeah, we, we may.
I think you'd get kids doing it.
Which I shouldn't do for me, but, um, may need to add a schedule B position, so, you know, potentially run it, or, you know, kind of like a yearbook club or something like that.
Right.
'Cause it will be after school hours.
Yeah.
I think you'll get a lot of kids jumping on that.
But I think they would love it, yes, yeah. That's a, that's amazing. Yeah, that's a, that's a wonderful opportunity provided by our community member.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's several, I, I mean.
Well, there, sorry, there's.
Major donor, and I know that you know that too, but people are really rallying around this, and so cool.
But, yeah, to get the other things donated, the concrete and the steel, yep, that's a wonderful, and, yep.
Speaks volumes.
Any other?
It's a cool idea, uh, I assume the technology comes with it, that the board, or that the scoreboard needs to run all the aspects of it, but as, as far as the donation, it's awesome that this has been agreed on, and the, the donation agreement's been signed and everything. Is there a guarantee of somehow that, that money can't ever fall through by any unfortunate situation?
Well, that's, that's a little risky, right? Um, like we, like you said, we, we have a, a legal agreement for the, for the donation, right? You know, in the event that something were to happen and, and, you know, that business couldn't come up with the third payment, for example. Um, I think it's highly unlikely, I'm just gonna speak frankly, I think it's unlikely that the district would go after a community partner that's already pledged this, um, this amount of money, uh, but even, I would say this, even if, um, something catastrophic happened, if the last payment fell through, the district still would have $300,000 stated in their scoreboard, um, that is two thirds of the way paid for. So, uh, this is a great question, Dave, um, it, we could, we could try to go after that last payment, I don't think the district would.
And that's not what I'm suggesting, I didn't know if there's a way of, to bond a payment or something like that, I, I don't know.
Looked into it, you know, I think at that point, our Capital Projects Fund would just pick up that last, that last piece of it. But I, after going out there, so Brian Hammer and I drove out, met with, met with the family, um, these are people that are just, they're integrated into our community, and I don't want to, so I'd be shocked if anything happened to that donation, yeah.
Sounds good. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions, clarifications? Okay, looking for a motion to, uh, go forward with this purchase?
I'll make the motion that the Board of Education approve the fabrication and installation of the Daktronic scoreboard as presented for a cost not to exceed $308,000, $308, $308,320.
I'll support.
All right, we got a motion by Brock and support by Housen. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing as no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Powers?
Yes.
Housen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Dickman?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. All right, and our final bit of action here is storage area network appliance purchase.
And Chris also has this in his presentation.
All right, save the most exciting for last, so, storage area network, or as I longingly refer to it as SAN, uh, this is Mr. DeBrosse's write-up, by the way, uh, this is something that is essential, as we all know, and nobody will ever see. So, um, John gave you a write-up, this actually is the proposal, and I, I'll start by saying it's already budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund, uh, John and I sit down under May and look at our needs, and that's really the first part of the Capital Projects Fund budgeting process. Um, but this replaces two current, um, Sanes, um, that are past warranty and kind of getting on the, on the brink, okay? One, I forget me for not knowing exactly, I think one's from 2015.
15 and 17.
One's from 2017, okay, so the technology levels are getting a little old, uh, so they're fully depreciated, all right? So we can replace those that feature classic hard drives with one SAN that features server storage drives, SSDs, which are better, way, way better, okay? Um, John had three quotes, uh, choosing, and again, this is all in your write-up, he chose the middle quote, which is HPE over Dell, because of familiarity of the district, particularly have been moving to HP, um, devices. We have some Dells, but I guess for servers, HPE is what he's most comfortable, uh, working with. So this is essential, everything that we save in the district needs to be secure, it needs to be on a state-of-the-art, um, server, and that's what this does for a small price of $43,267.71 cents. Really, I don't recall a purchasing consortium, C H P, you know, it's not out there, it's in your write-up.
Midwestern Higher Education Compact.
Yes.
Which is very similar to a RMC consortium. Any questions that I can entertain about this one? Not well versed in it, but I know that it is essential.
Okay, seeing as no questions, look for a motion to go forward with this purchase. I'll make, oh, go ahead, Mr. Dickman.
I'll make the motion that the Board of Education purchase the HPE MSA 2060 SAN device from Moss Telecommunications, option number two, for $43,267.71.
And I'll support that, thank you. Okay, so we got a motion by Dickman, support by Powers, is there any, um, further discussion? With that, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Brock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Powers?
Yes.
Housen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. Okay, that takes us down to superintendent report.
We got to this rather quick tonight, so, yeah. Um, we're in week three of the school year, and, uh, you know, the first five-day week, which will be interesting for everybody, but I'm hearing great things about the start of the school year, uh, and it's encouraging to hear that not only from, um, teachers and administrators, but students are enjoying themselves as well. So those are good, positive things when you're walking through the building to hear those positive comments. Another thing that, uh, Erica just emailed everybody today about was the Hometown Hero Event, that's taking place on October 3rd. If you are interested in attending, please respond to Erica's email. I know that, uh, right now, Matt has, um, you know, expressed interest for both he and his wife, I believe. Um, I'm going to attend, so if anybody, you are as well, okay?
Possibility.
Possibility, okay, all right. Comes back in when we're talking about parties, no.
Yeah.
So, all right, but let Erica know if you would like to attend. And then I mentioned, uh, working with John Garner, a TK grad, who, um, owns a company, um, Move Media, and we're starting this week, Wednesday, to interview, um, a selected number of staff members to be in this video to promote TK schools. So we're gonna interview this Wednesday, next Wednesday, he's gonna take videos of the district and then use a lot of the, the pictures that, um, we have available for him, um, partly, you know, the new construction, you know, things that have happened there. And if you'd be interested in looking at some of the products that he's done, he's done several videos for Zealand Public Schools, and they're out on their website, so, a little bit of his work. And then finally, Chris.
Question about that. We've had videos done before, have they been utilized effectively, uh, how? I don't know what the, uh, shelf life is of something like that, but, uh, it pays to have it updated too, so I understand that.
That was one of the things that came up in our discussion, was that the videos that are out there are dated, they were done prior to my arrival, um, in 2018.
Must really be old.
They must have, yes, thanks, thanks, Dave. But anyhow, they are, they are outdated at this point, and, um, it's very reasonable cost to get this done, so, um, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So I was gonna turn things over to Chris for just a moment.
Well, thank you. Um, so as you all know, uh, this will be my last board meeting. Uh, I have resigned my position as assistant superintendent with the district. It was the toughest, um, toughest professional decision I think I have ever made, um, and I won't belabor it here, but I just wanted to say once again, you know, nothing but gratitude, thank you all, uh, for the opportunities. And it's been a wonderful few years, and, uh, this district is, is a special place, and it's headed in the right direction. And you can see, you know, with the, with the things we're doing here and the, and the community, community partnership, um, this is just, it's a hard place to leave, so I'll leave it at that, um, but, yeah, thank you all. Wish nothing but the best, and I'll be around.
Thank you for everything you've done. Um, you bring, you and the Winger section there bring a lot of levity to board meetings, so.
You control him over there.
You're putting a lot on his shoulders now, and, and again, we appreciate, uh, the financial, it's, it's just never been a question in my tendership on the board with the different, um, finance people, and you've continued that, and you just keep upping it. So it's, it's just wonderful, I appreciate it, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Truly wish you well, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, uh, you've done a great job for us, and we are grateful as well, and, uh, you will be missed, so.
All right, uh, that takes us down to, um, I think it's board comments here. I just have a couple of quick things, um. This is the week I signed us up for ticket sales, but I, I thought Mr. Brock and Winger, you guys aren't gonna be available, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, and then Dave, you're usually working that night, aren't you?
I'm not doing that this year, so.
Oh, okay.
So I might be able to help you out.
So, uh, Mr. Hammer said he would be getting an email out to us, kind of giving us some explanation, we're supposed to be, uh, pretty much show up early and be ready.
What's the date that you?
Oh, Friday.
Friday.
This Friday?
It's Friday, yeah, the winning game.
I'm out of state, sorry.
Oh, Dave.
Grandkids need somebody to watch them.
Oh.
Mr. Housen will take your spot.
Can you state your address?
And what?
You just said you're out of state, so.
That'll be much more fun to go watch grandkids, yeah.
Goodness.
Okay, there was that, uh, Mr. Lahey already spoke, okay, I believe that's it. Um, is there anything else, the board? All right, with that, uh, meeting adjourned, um, 7:41. Thank you.
So you get rid of Winger, and it's a short meeting.
Yeah. You should just step out next time again.
Well, uh, so, speaking back in good spirit, is everything okay?
Uh, so, obviously, in my experience, you don't feel like you're.